Welcome to the regular meeting of the Fairfield Planning Commission for February 28th, 2018. May we please have the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Wesley.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Branch.
Yeah.
Commissioner Paddus. Commissioner Walker. Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Geiger.
Here. Commissioner Branch, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are speaker cards in the lobby that have to be filled out by anyone who would like to speak on an item under public comments or scheduled matters. Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time the item is considered. Speakers will be each given three minutes to speak. Please pass the card up to us before the time for public comments on the item. Next is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
A second?
I have a second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
I have a second.
Next is approval of the minutes from our February 14th Valentine's Day meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes?
I have a question.
All right.
I have a question.
All right. Moved in second and all in favor, say yes. Motion passes.
Public comments. This is the time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Items from the public that are not part of the agenda will be taken under consideration without discussion or action by the commission and may be referred to staff. I'll now open the public comment period. I don't have any speaker cards. Seeing no speakers, I'll close the public comment period. The next item on the agenda is scheduled matters. For each agenda's item, there will first be a presentation by staff. Then I'll open the public hearing and see if any names of the members of the public would like to come forward to speak. A red light will flash to indicate that your three-minute speaking time is up. I'll then close the hearing after all speakers have addressed the commission and after all our questions have been answered. After the hearing is closed, the Planning Commission will deliberate on the items and may have additional questions of staff. We won't take any testimony after the public hearing is closed and will vote on the item.
The first item is Item A, the Annual Report of the City's General Plan. Our staff person is Brian Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission? This is an annual exercise we undergo as required by state law and this basically describes how we're implementing our general plan, which as a whole was adopted in 2002, although of course there have been substantial elements that have been amended and added to over time. But fundamentally, this is a 2002 element, I mean general plan, that we are dealing with today. The annual report reveals activities associated with all elements where relevant and incorporates as attachments the State Department of Housing and Community Development format for the housing element, as well as providing you a copy of the Housing Authority Annual Report, which went to council last year. So basically, I'm going to go through the key elements and some of the major activities. This is not a complete list necessarily, it's just some highlights. Under the land use element, which is the fundamental guiding constitutional framework for the general plan, some of the key activities that occurred in 2017 included, of course, adoption of the heart of Fairfield specific plan and zoning, master planning to development permitting in the train station specific plan area, our annual zoning ordinance update, which you will see later this year for 2018 as well. The housing element, we saw new construction continuing, not quite at pre-great recession levels, but we're still, we still have a very healthy housing construction market and we anticipate this ramping up further in the forthcoming two years. In addition, the city continues to offer some affordable housing programs such as housing choice vouchers, mortgage assistance programs, and the city's housing rehabilitation programs. All those are outlined in the report itself. Other elements were also, saw progress during this year. The open space conservation and recreation element, for example, we saw several park capital improvements. In addition, the Allen Witt Park and Linear Park master plans, these could be major projects for improving the city's public spaces in central Fairfield as we move toward implementation of these master plans. The circulation element, transit improvements, Jepson Parkway, and of course, the highlight is the train station opening in summer of last year. Public facilities and services, we have a capital projects program that continue to be implemented and you'll see more about that forthcoming program later today. Economic development, again, the heart of Fairfield specific plan, efforts to work with North Texas Street and downtown merchants and associations to improve and do outreach in those areas, which I think you're beginning to see definitely some success in those efforts as property owners and city staff and the Main Street Association are bringing new restaurants and the new brew pub and new businesses to the downtown area. I think downtown is becoming quite exciting now and we hope to see further improvements over time. Business recruitment and retention from our Economic Development Department division continues. And finally, I might mention the Travis Protection Element. The city of Fairfield continues to participate in efforts to work with Travis Air Force Base to enhance the base's mission and the interaction between the community and the air force base. The state also requires the city to report on housing construction, review of housing element program implementation, and to submit a copy of the Housing Successor Agency Annual Report. Those are included as attachments to the actual annual report document. We recommend you adopt a resolution recommending the city council accept the annual report on the general plan. The report will then be submitted to HCD, the state, for their review and compliance with state law. Thank you. I can answer any questions.
Do any commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Walker?
First of all, thank you. Are you able to discuss some of the portions of the housing component in terms-
When you say discuss, I mean-
Well, you know, there are certain plans, there are certain pieces like the tenant-based rental assistance program and the family self-sufficiency program. And they'll say there are 13 active participants in, you know, a city with 100,000 folks, just to be able to understand why there would be only 13 participants. Can you discuss that or is that a question for housing?
It's more a question for our housing authority. I can say that the participation levels and the assistance we're able to provide are based on funding and staffing levels. It's not that we're holding back on implementing these programs. It's just HUD, the Federal Housing and Urban Development, only gives us so many vouchers, so much money and so many program resources to be able to help more people than that we would like to do.
Right. Understood. But if that's the answer, but maybe we don't know. Maybe not enough people know about it. Maybe there's money and we didn't get, or I don't know.
No.
That's my question. Is it a function of we only had enough for 13 individuals or only 13 individuals apply?
It's more a case of limitations on program funds and staffing than lack of knowledge and lack, because they're very active in promoting the program when we have space in the program and funds available.
Okay. Commissioner Cohen?
Yes. When we talked last time about the general plan, about six, eight months ago, you had said, both you and Dave said there was going to be some discussion about going beyond where the current general plan is. Has that started or what's the status on that?
So there've been a collection of discussions just with various entities that are involved in that topic. Nothing public has yet come out as a part of that, so there's still discussions. Whether or not there's further discussion on that topic in the public realm, yet to be determined. But I will keep you informed as we know more about that.
Okay, great. And when is the general plan? What does that run through? What year? I forget.
So the general plan itself does not necessarily have an expiration date. The issue that was specifically discussed, though I think that you're referring to, is what we call Measure L, which is a voter initiative that essentially locks in our urban limit line or that boundary that we can expand urban services to. It locks that in until the end of 2020 unless the voters, if we want to amend it, the voters up through the end of 2020 would have to vote to do so. The end of 2020, if there's no specific action taken by the voters to extend that, then Measure L expires and the city council has the full authority on their own without the voters to amend the urban limit line. So at the moment, there's no, there's no public formal actions being taken by the voters to extend that. There's discussions, you know, just in various circles on that topic, but at the moment, there's nothing specific that is out there about amending it. So-
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Walker?
So, we can't expand the urban limit line, but the county can build on our edges and ask for our water and sewer services.
Yeah, I can't comment on the legal, on the legal rights that they have to do that. You know, it's, the Measure L and our general plan cover what our, what we as a city and what you as a planning commission have the authority to make recommendations over. Whether outside entities have the legal rights to do that, separate question that I'm not, I'm not knowledgeable enough to answer for you.
It seems kind of silly that we're forced into an urban limit line by the voters, but yet our water and our sewer, which is under District of the two city councils, ends up giving services to outside our city line. It seems kind of silly, especially since our services are going to have to be used like police and fire, which will have to respond in case of an emergency, yet we don't receive no tax dollars for it.
Any other comments or questions?
I have more comments.
More comments? Okay.
In the general plan on the housing element, is the requirement to put in a low-cost, 10% low-cost housing in the RM district included in that plan?
It's, it is addressed in the element. That's, that was a separate policy in the general plan land use element. It wasn't, it wasn't put in place purely explicitly because of the housing element.
But it's in this plan.
Yes.
Okay. I would be opposed to delete that part of, in the general plan and our recommendation to the city council in approving it, that we wish to delete that RM requirement to put in 10% low-income housing in new homes. One, I have several reasons. One is, the housing office has to manage that process and there are, do you know how many homes the housing office presently has in that, in those low incomes that they manage?
I don't know the number offhand, no.
Could you bring that number to us?
Sure.
Okay. And the second part of it is the housing office receives not one dime of income to manage that. So when we talk consistently about the city budget, we keep adding consistently more of these housing units that the city has to manage to make sure they stay affordable in the new developments on a consistent basis and my, which means we keep adding cost with no income. And the second part of it is we have loads of affordable housing in the city of Fairfield. And by doing this, we are stopping people from buying those older homes and keeping up the value of those older homes to buy them, because we're now trying to put into new developments homes that are underpriced, that they can't afford to build unless they raise the prices of the other houses within the development. And more specifically, if you have a small builder who's trying to do an infill project in an RM district and builds homes, they're always at, they're at the low end, first of all, to build because you're buying in the inner part of the city. And then the second part is that they have to then raise the prices of the other houses at the lower end in order to pay for the other house, which means they'd have trouble maybe selling them in that case. So those are my, I would request that the commission, since we've already asked and I guess we're going to meet soon in a meeting with the city council, I don't know, do we know when that's going to be?
At the moment, it still hasn't been-
So we pass this before we have the discussion and then we have the discussion and maybe the city council agrees with us, but yet we have it in the plan.
Well, if I could clarify, this is only a report on what we've done in the plan over the last year. It by no means is a verdict or a refer, a verdict on the plan. And there's certainly opportunities for discussing housing policy at future dates. But this, this is just kind of a report on what we've done in the last year. It's not really a policy setting issue.
And I think that we should, we should show our objection to that plan and the objection to that, since we've already talked about this in the form of plan, until we've had our meeting with the city council to discuss it. Because as long as you have it in writing in a plan, it's a law, it's a fact or a rule or a law or whatever you want to talk about once it's written down.
Well, procedurally, though, I don't think we can amend the general plan tonight. This is just a report to let us know what's happened over the past-
But it doesn't hurt that we can't show our objection to it.
Well, I think if the commission wants to register some kind of objection to what's in the plan, that's fine. But I think procedurally, we can't amend the general plan tonight.
Are we amending this or?
Correct. This is just a report that's due every year to HCD and the Office of Planning and Research to the state. And it comes before the commission and to the council, but it does not amend the general plan at all. It's reporting on 2017.
So how do we address this issue that the commission has 7-0 had to concern with?
Can, can staff transmit individual comments from commissioners along with this report to the council?
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's, you know, this report reports on factual information about what has happened. It's a separate issue from debate about policy in that general plan. And the commission, at this point, has not voted on a proposal to amend the general plan specifically.
Right, and we couldn't do that tonight anyways.
As part of that upcoming item, when it is scheduled-
But we have voted on our objection to it.
I'm not aware of any resolution that's been passed for-
Did we not vote on that? Take a vote?
Explicitly stating, no.
On, on the, on the RM requirement to have low-income housing in new developments in RM district?
I think it's come up as a discussion, or as a point of discussion, but I don't think we've taken any formal action on that.
What, what the commission did do, and I'm going to say it was in 20, it was, I believe, August of 2016, passed a recommendation to the city council to amend the language regarding the RM general plan district to provide a greater amount of flexibility for developers to meet the objective. The city council passed that, upon your recommendation, passed that amendment to the general plan. So the general plan's been amended to give a greater degree of flexibility for developers to meet that requirement.
And whose hands has that flexibility?
I believe it says the city, which means whichever entity is making, is authorized under the code to make the decisions on that, excuse me, on the entitlement, that would be the entity that has the authority. And so in this case, you've actually acted once on this subject. Paradise 360, it was a project proposed by De Nova Homes, had an entitlement obligation that was given to them by the planning commission.
And they moved it to their, to the homes out on, in, out by Solano College.
Correct. So after, after the general plan was amended at your recommendation, De Nova came back with a request to amend their requirement and the planning commission changed your recommendation, or changed the obligation that was put upon them to allow them greater flexibility. So in that case, it was the planning commission.
But I don't see the flexibility on the small builder. There hasn't been any flexibility from staff on the small builders to do infill projects.
Yeah. I, here's what I can do.
But I know a project we've done is the, the project on Alaska and Pennsylvania, a city-owned property, was an RM district. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I think Ceno built it.
That was, yeah. And it was originally high density. I'm not sure what density it actually got entitled. That was before I was-
I think it's RLM.
Running the division, but I don't believe it's RM. They were a separate project that had a separate collection of obligations because it was being sold by the, I believe it was the housing authority that sold that project. And so as a part of the deal that the city's housing authority struck with the builder, terms were put in place as to how affordability would be achieved there. So what I can do is I can report back to you at your next meeting on the change that you did that was ultimately approved by the city council and the degree of flexibility that we believe that that gives developers in meeting that objective.
Good. Thank you.
Well, I, I think that sort of predates me. I know we've had a discussion about it, predates Commissioner Cohen also. But it sounds like the, the issue, Gary, that really sort of gets to the point is whether the small developer has the flexibility. So if I'm a big developer, I can move and say, okay, we'll get the lower-end units over here because I'm doing 500 units. If I'm doing 10 units or 11 units and I'm doing one development with that unit, then I have to make one of those low-income and affect the price of the rest by raising the price so I can still hit my profit points. So, again, this is just a report, but I'd like to know more about what we can do at the lower end too and how that would be implemented. My question would be, is that the Housing Successor Agency that would be in charge of that or no?
No, that would be the planning commission and city council.
Okay. But the implementation-
Would pass that kind of ordinance.
Yeah. I'm not referring to the passing, the implementation. Who would actually ensure that it happens? Who would a builder go to and say, you know what, what I want is, based upon what we understand the rule to be, to be able to do that?
Again, it would be planning commission and if there's, well, a legislative act, it would be city council that would ultimately make that.
Okay.
So what would happen is, and typically this would occur as a part of a subdivision of greater than five units. If it's a subdivision of greater than five units, that comes before the planning commission. You are the body that is the authority to make the decisions about that, about the obligation.
But in the past, we've been told by city staff that we had no authority to do that. City staff, that gentleman right there has told us we had no authority the last time this came up.
Well, no, I mean, there's, there's-
No, you didn't tell us that or no, it isn't?
There are limitations on what we can do. If, if something is in the general plan or in city ordinances, we, a planning commission cannot act contrary to the general plan or the ordinances without-
That's my point.
-council amending them.
Right. So it's a circular argument. If the general plan says it, but we have the authority to do something, we can't do contrary to the general plan. Therefore, we have to get to the point where it's sort of included in the general plan, if that's something we would want to do as a commission.
The plan has a, essentially, it's a policy level document. And so it will give you guidance as to, as to what the policy is of the city.
Right.
But the planning commission, though, have the authority to make a final decision about what satisfies that policy and what doesn't.
Right. So if we're, if there's a project before us, we have, and if we approve it, we have to find that it's consistent with zoning and general plan, but we always have the discretion to deny a particular project.
Or approve. So let's say we-
Right, right. If we approve it, I'm saying if we approve it, we have to make-
Exactly.
Some of the findings that we have to make are that it's consistent with the general plan and that it's consistent with zoning. So we have the discretion to approve it or the discretion to deny it.
Okay. So, and again, I'm the new kid here. So just walk with me just for a little, another moment. So if the general plan states there's a certain amount of, let's call it low-income housing that has to be part of any development in the city-
In RM district.
And some, in an RM district, and someone comes to us and their plan has no lower-income housing, and then we say, you know what, we still like this even though it has no low-income housing for these 13 units, but we still like it. What I imagine we would get in terms of pushback from staff and legal is, wait a minute, the general plan says it has to have that. So just so I'm clear, are you saying we could override what it says in the general plan if we feel it still meets the overall intent?
Yes. And one, as Dave, David indicated, be careful when you say the project has to have low-income housing in it. As Dave indicated, the policy change that was made-
Two years ago, I believe you said, Dave? I believe it was August of 2016.
Yeah. Gave flexibility in, in mechanisms for meeting an overall goal of providing some affordable housing in, in, associated with the project. Keep in mind, one of the reasons for this policy, long-term policy that was done several years ago, was the intent of the, of the general plan and the zoning ordinance for RM-zoned areas was attached housing. That's part of the overall vision, the overall goal of the general plan, to have a diversity of different kinds of housing stock in the city. So the, so the concept, the thinking back then was if you're going to go with detached housing anyway, there has to be a public benefit to going away from the diverse housing. And affordable housing and 10% affordable housing was the original idea, way of dealing with that. Now, as Dave, again, as Dave pointed out, we've relaxed that in the sense we allow more flexibility in how you meet the overall goal of providing for some affordability in housing associated with the RM development. It doesn't have to be built in that project area and necessarily in that subdivision.
But when they require it, which they have in the past, they end up raising the price of the homes in that area. So that the people who are trying to buy a new home at a lower end in an infill project end up paying more money in order to have somebody move into a house at a lesser cost, which is then handed over to the housing office to manage to make sure that continues for infinity of what staff receives, the city budget receives no money to do.
Well, okay, Gary, one thing to, I mean, I'm going to push back a little bit on some of the things you said there. There are a variety, I mean, it's a little more complicated than that. Housing markets are not quite that simple. There are a variety of forces and costs associated with how housing prices are set. In, in the context of all the universe of costs that are associated with how a developer prices housing, this is a fairly minor part of it. And if the housing market supports housing at a certain price, just because you have this particular requirement on it, doesn't mean that all that cost is going to be passed to people buying houses in that subdivision.
In a small, I disagree with you 100%. In a small subdivision infill project, it does. It does affect quite extensively. And this was my argument before when you brought this up, and it's still my argument now, that if we're going to entice infill projects, that we, we, I don't think we can do this, plus, I don't like that we do it, plus we affect the older houses in Fairfield, which would then be what that person would buy to help revitalize the older neighborhoods. A good example of that is when, back in the 80s, when we planned, and I was on the city council, we planned three projects: Paradise Valley, Rolling Hills, and Rancho Solano. They were all upgrade housing at that time. And in that upgrade, we had no, on the bottom line, housing. They were all upgrade. At the time, Fairfield Sussin Uni, just as an example, was going to close Fairview School because the neighborhood around Fairview School had aged so much, they were not able to fulfill, put the students in there without busing them in. But because of these three projects, it raised the prices of some of the older homes. People were able to sell them and move up into the next stage, which in turn brought new families in there and Fairview School stayed open because of all those new families that moved in. So in the old- So in the overall, I'm thinking in the overall process of the plan, the plan is to keep this rotation going. So people are moving in, you keep the price of the older homes, so they raise. People have some value in them, and then new people move in and they revitalize those neighborhoods. That's what I've seen in my years of being here. And I think that this policy is a bad policy.
So when we have this discussion with the city council, this will be one of the topics that we'll be able to discuss, right? Because I think this is an important discussion.
Staff will be able to bring more information for you on the policy and all of the, and enough information for you to, to make an informed decision on this. Just, just so you know that at the moment, I believe there's only one outstanding unit that has an obligation on it and the city is working directly with that developer to identify incentives that we can provide to help make that affordable unit that's obligated on that single unit feasible. So, you know, we're always willing to do whatever it takes to, to help make that happen if we have the ability to do that, and we're doing that right now.
And we, and I think we also need to address the impact, and nobody's been able to give us a figure, maybe you bring them back. No one's been able to give us the cost of managing whatever that number is by the city housing office and where they get income to manage them. Nobody has brought those numbers back, and I'd like, I think I'd like to see them, the commission so.
And what I'll say is, there are a, a number of outstanding, not outstanding, but existing how, units with obligations on them. There's one staff person who has that responsibility. We've, we have not found that, that that person is, is overburdened with that work.
But do you get money for, for that person from this?
You know, I don't know how exactly they're funded, but one way or the other, we have a, a collection of these that even if we changed the policy today for the next 35 years, 40 years, that obligation's still in place. Changing the policy isn't going to eliminate.
That's right, but it, but it will eliminate adding to it if there was no cost.
Correct.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to go back and change what's already been done. I'm asking us to look to where we go forward and look at those two, the two issues that I've presented.
Ultimately, it'll come down to a question of if the city wishes to actively ensure affordable housing or if we wish to do it passively, and that'll be, that'll be a part of the debate.
Well, I, I don't agree with your analysis because I think we have affordable housing, and by not doing this doesn't mean that we won't have it.
Yeah, the, the state probably, will probably disagree with you.
Well, I, I'm sure they will, but we can disagree back.
Ultimately, they're the arbiter on, on the question.
Any other questions for staff? All right, any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve and recommend to the city council the 2017 annual report on the general plan. Everything Commissioner Walker's being said was, is very important, I think, but it's for a discussion we have with the city council at our meeting together, so.
I'm sorry, can you give me a second then?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
As long as we don't get beaten up when we look at this later on and say, but your plan says.
But this is approving what has happened in 2017 and not going forward, so.
I, I hope so. I, I, I hope so.
I'm sure we won't get beaten up, so, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, the next item is item B, the fiscal year 2018-2019 capital projects general plan consistency review. Our staff person again is Brian Miller.
Thank you, um, this is another state, this is, this is another state mandate. We're required by the California code to review capital improvements program for consistency with the general plan. These capital program, improvement program also includes policies that incur over many years. So some of them you've seen in the past, and they're different phases, moving from design to construction to completion. So we're, this is a chance to also see what's happened over more than one year. The, the spreadsheet shows that there are a variety of activities that our public works department engage in as part of the capital improvements program, which is the larger city projects that involve consultants, involve detail, multiple funding sources, involve multiple agencies. So these are the more complicated city programs that have complicated funding sources and complicated lifes, lifespans. Just to highlight a few of them, there are a variety of infrastructure, maintenance, repair, and upgrades listed in this, in this year's program. The West Texas Street Gateway, the planning for that gateway near the Transportation Center continues. This has definitely been a long-term project that continues as our staff continues to search for funding sources and work for Cal, work with Caltrans to finalize the designs of this project. Jepson Parkway, providing an alternative route for travelers between Sassoon City and Vacaville through the train station specific plan, which is a segment currently under construction. A variety of traffic signal updates, ongoing pavement maintenance projects, many of them funded by Measure P funds. Safe routes to schools, crosswalks, sidewalk improvements, et cetera, near key schools on the east side of Fairfield. Bus stop improvements, the Fairfield Transportation Center, long-term plans for the, for a major parking garage and public art installation. The police headquarters expansion and renovation, this is a new project appearing on this year's capital projects list. The city is going to look at expanding the existing police station right next to us, right here. And that will, that, the planning for that and design for that is underway. Tonight, we're asking you to adopt the resolution finding the capital projects program consistent with the city's general plan. The report and the document, of course, contains specific lists and references to the general plan elements where these capital projects are consistent. We can answer any questions, I have Ryan Pagano, Paganaban from the Public Works Department here. I did it. And he can answer any specific questions on capital projects that I am unable to answer.
Any questions from staff?
Some funding, now if I understand some things, like the police headquarters and expansion renovation, there's been money, I don't think in each new house that's built, that is put aside that, that's going to help fund that?
That's correct, yeah, that's a part of our, our, our public facilities fee that, that is charged to each new home to help pay for those expansions, yes.
So that, that's with that money, the Fairfield Transportation Center money comes from federal and state?
Yes, those are the funding sources they're looking for, yes.
Any, any local money that goes into that, or we look to try to, the last one was funded 100% I think, by federal or state money? Well, not the, yeah, the, the first one I think was funded by public, by state and federal money.
We're going to.
The first, the first part.
Part of the expansion of FTC, we will be pursuing grants, so it would be state, federal.
Let me go back, the, the one that's built now.
I'm not aware of.
Okay, I, I, if I remember right, it was. So what you're trying to do then is fund this one again 100% if you can with state and federal money.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Jepson Parkway is also money that we've received from state and federal to, to do.
Yes, as, as well as some funding at the local level that's charged to new development.
Right, for the area that's there, okay. And the West Texas Street Gateway, they pay a fee, I think, don't they?
No, there's no fee program been set up specifically for West Texas Street. There are elements of it that we could draw upon some city funds for, such as some of the upgrades we could use, for example, AB 1600 funds for public urban design, what is called urban design. Most of that, again, we're seeking for federal and state funding for though.
So the remaining ones, infrastructure maintenance, Nitzel, pavement maintenance, safe routes and bus stops, is that mostly local money or again, you're trying to get?
So, the traffic signal improvement at Nitzel Road, that's a portion, so we collect a fee similarly to any, so that one is, that one, and then the, the bus stop improvements, that is through transit. So transit collects revenue that's, you know, from fair share riders and what have you, and then that's how those improvements are getting completed. What was the other one, I'm sorry?
Um, infrastructure maintenance, repair and upgrades.
So what, so any type of water main replacement, any type of sewer, those are enterprise funded through?
Through fees.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
On the, one of these, I guess, exhibit A, the capital projects, there's 13 projects I count on here that have completion dates of 2017. Am I accurate in reading that or? And if I am accurate in reading that, are those going to be completed this year in 2018? And why are we showing it 17 and were they, I wasn't here last year, were they on to be completed last year? And I, my second.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My second question is, we're kind of overlapping, I, I think here with the, from the budget standpoint for the city, and I don't have the, I don't claim to have the expertise with that. I assume all of these been put, been funded through the budget for, that has been approved by the city council, is that correct?
So, seventeen, the 2017 programs includes things that were actually completed in 2017. And that's the first set of, or construction, which is going to be completed in 2018.
But they're listed on the 2018-19 fiscal year, that's why I guess I'm getting confused.
Look, look forward, it actually says the first group of projects have been completed or under construction.
I understand, but on the same piece of paper, it's right below 17, it goes, it intermixes 17 with 18 and going forward. That's where my confusion is.
Well, in some cases, the seven, the 18 projects are under construction, so that's why they're shown with a 2018 date. If I'm understanding your question correctly.
The question I think I heard you say is, are the 2017 projects completed?
That is correct.
Wanted to try to kind of memorialize and kind of document what we've done over the course of the last year since the last time we came here. So I think that's why they were included.
So are they completed?
That's correct.
So everything that says 2017.
Or they're in construct, they started construction in 2017 and they will.
And they're funded.
It will be completed this fiscal year, June 30th, 2018. So this, it's almost escaping over the fiscal year. And to address the, the, in regards to the capital improvement, every single project that's on this list that's in construction or in design is included in the five-year CIP.
And funded.
Capital Improvement Program.
And funded.
So, and funded, that is in construction or in design. If there's a project that's listed on here that's beyond those dates, that's maybe in preliminary or planning stages, those are future projects that, that we will program into our workload as funding comes available.
I think, I think one of the confusion here is, this is a fiscal year document, it's not a calendar year document, so.
And I appreciate that, but what, I guess, at the top of the document, it says 2018-2019 fiscal year, and that's where the confusion, I'm coming, I'm having. And then, okay, and then the last thing I would just say for the record, I'm not going to go and cross-check everything that says here that conforming with the general plan. I'm assuming and on your recommendation that this is, everything in here is going to conform with the general plan.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's the request.
Any other questions? All right.
Justin for clarity, since it would help if we said, there's one that's actually completed and we put maybe a month, right, so January 2017. Something that tells us there's a difference between construction in 2017 and then construction in 2018. There's nothing here saying completed, it just says construction. And the column refers to estimated completion. So this whole questioning was based on, you look here and you can't tell what's been done and what hasn't been done. So if there was some way to just put something that says it's been done or it's in process, that would just ease the confusion, just for clarity.
Thank you.
All right, do I have any comments from, or questions from the public? I don't have any speaker cards, all right, so I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion. It's all included.
Yeah, that's included.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right, it's time for the director's report. Do you have any items for the director's report?
Yes, I have three items, and our city attorney has one item as well. The first item I'd like to do is to introduce to you our new community development director, this Kevin Snyder, who started this week with the city, and we've been eagerly looking forward to his starting, so, this is Kevin.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Have a quick question. What, my question would be, what, what do you feel the role of the planning commission is to your department?
Apologies, it is now, thank you. I, I see the planning commission as being a key advisory body to city council, a representation of the community at large. You live, work, play in the community, you bring perspectives and ideas. And I hope that the planning commission also, as you've done a little bit tonight, challenges, thoughts, gives us things to think about, gives us different perspectives, makes us scratch our heads a little bit, allows and invites active dialogue, like some of the dialogue you're having tonight. Hope that answers the question.
You did, then, and the one thing I'd like to ask is that when staff works with a developer and comes to a conclusion on certain items, I would hope, or I would ask that staff, and, and this is nothing against Dave because I think Dave's done a fantastic job. I really appreciate the job that Dave has done. That they present all sides to the commission, even the side, you know, for example, if you have three different ways to go and you've agreed to this way, that this is what you want to do, that the staff advised the commission that there are other alternatives that were discussed and talked about, but this is the one you chose. So that the commission, who, who is not in those meetings with staff and gets to hear why you went one direction or another, can look at those and, and, and before we vote, to see why staff made that decision or whether we think there's another alternative.
I think, certainly Dave and I can talk more about it, and obviously within legal parameters.
Dave's familiar with this and I won't go into it in detail, but if, I, I trust him to present, at least my point of view, on that the commission gets all sides of the issue, even though staff has decided to go in one direction.
And I, I will say, and this is me speaking from my own personal experience, that I think it's appropriate that the council, excuse me, the council, commission, it's been a long two days, that the commission understand all the thought process that went into it, even if ultimately staff came up with an approach that perhaps is reflective of what they believe is, is most appropriate for conformity with codes and standards and general plan. But nevertheless, the commission understands that there may have been other options they looked at, I think that's reasonable.
Because I, I think it's, it's healthy for the city council if we can dig into all sides of the issue so that they've all been discussed, so that when it moves up to the city council, all of a sudden, those other issues come up of which the planning commission never knew about or was able to debate.
Sure, that makes sense.
Any other questions for our new planning director?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of other items for me, I'd mentioned at our last meeting, we, we were determining who was going to attend the planning commissioners' conference in early April. We concluded who that was, and you should, so Commissioner Wesley, Commissioner Cohen, and Commissioner Branch, along with Commissioner McDonald, will be attending this year, the rest of you will have the opportunity next year. So I believe you should have received an email from Cindy confirming that you've been registered. We have hotel rooms. After our next meeting, we'll talk transportation and, and those kinds of things.
Let us know, David, to, next year, as much notice as you can give us.
Yes.
So we can get it in our calendar. For this one, I had a conflict already planned and I can't change it, so.
Yep, yep. The last time I, last item I want to mention is I emailed out to you the new contact information for Lucia Morales. If you're not able to attend, I believe you all got that email, yes?
Yeah.
Good, very good. Okay, with that, our city attorney has one item to report.
Good evening, commissioners. At the February 10th city council workshop, the council directed our office to prepare an amendment to the city code to eliminate term limits for planning commissioners. So our office is in the process of preparing that ordinance. I expect that it will be finished shortly and then go before city council, so just wanted to give you that update.
So that really, it looks like that decision's been made, so we won't really. So that really, it looks like that decision's been made, so we won't really have that as a part of our discussion?
That-
With the City Council.
We've been acting at council direction.
Right.
Yeah, and you actually passed a resolution a while back, making that recommendation to the council. So that'll, that should be on the record.
All right, do any, Commissioners have any information items?
Are we meeting on March 14th?
Yes, we are.
Anything else? All right, we're adjourned till March 14th.